That's what we had at the committee meetings.
Right. Ladies and gentlemen, the city council, the mayor, and good people assembled here tonight in the community of March, I want to address you all tonight on a deep level from the heart. We're discussing a matter of great importance here tonight. The question we are considering is what to do with human lives, human beings, how should we treat people? People who are our friends, our neighbors, our relatives, our family members, and in some cases, ourselves. Let me tell you something about myself. When I was a kid, I was in the Cub Scouts, then I went in the Weed Loes, then the Boy Scouts, I was in Civil Air Patrol, and I was a champion wrestler in high school. I went into the Marines and drove tanks and wrestling tournaments on the side. I picked up the habit of drinking when I was in the Marines, drank heavily for several years after I got out. By my mid twenties, I had completely stopped drinking alcohol and replaced it with a moderate and responsible use of cannabis. But 1993, I was set up by my friend to get him a half ounce of pot. He was in trouble because his friend set him up, and he had been set up by another friend. He talked me into it, and he brought an undercover police officer along with him. I was arrested six weeks later and sent to the county prison before making bail. The jury ruled it was a case of entrapment, so I narrowly avoided the six months of jail the prosecutors were pushing for. I'm from Ephraim, and it turns out our police chief, Tim Burkholder, was contracting members of the Ephraim Borough Police to the Maxter County Drug Task Force, then billing them for massive amounts of overtime and pocketing the money. They proved that he stole $100,000, but they think he stole much more than that, that he couldn't prove. He went to jail for his crimes. So when we talk about the corruption in the drug war, I'm not talking about Colombia, or Panama, or Mexico, I'm talking about Ephraim. Where else have we seen corruption? I am speaking for the voiceless, the thousands and thousands who have been arrested in Allentown since the prohibition law was signed 85 years ago on May 22, 1933, by Governor P. D. P. and went into effect on September 1, 1933. When I think about all those NARPs who went into the community to root out hippies, to crack down on the minorities and poor whites, the smashed indoors, the wrecked human lives, the broken apart families, it just tears me apart. The pain we have borne for too long is no longer tolerable. You know, we are owed an apology. We have, we have, by all those who have cons... The pain we have borne for too long is no longer tolerable. You know, we are owed an apology. We are all owed an apology by those who have conspired against us, allowed this to happen and ruin the lives of far too many good people. Eighty-five years later, and now what? Is society, is there more cannabis now in Allentown, or less in 1993? Eighty-five years of war on people over a plant has failed. It's absolutely obvious to any objective observer, it's time to declare this policy of failure and end this destructive policy right now. As the executive director of the Keystone Cannabis Coalition, I have heard more stories than I can tell in a small book of good people who have had their lives turned upside down by arrest. It's been said that no one goes to jail for simple possession of cannabis, that never will let, the threat is always there. You can be sentenced for up to 30 days in jail for a joint, and some people do do time in jail for simple possession. Thirty days in jail for some pot is crazy, and nobody agrees with that. If we accept it is true that no one does 30 days in jail anymore...
Excuse me, how much, how much longer is that?
One paragraph, one paragraph.
Let's finish it up.
If we accept it is true that nobody does 30 days in jail anymore for pot, then it's time to let the law reflect that reality officially. Take away that threat of jail, in a short amount of time, you will cast your vote with an ordinance of profound importance to thousands of people. I want you to see those people in your minds, feel them in your heart, weigh mercy and compassion, understanding and love on the scales of justice, and please vote according to your deepest human values, and let humanity know for all time that you are on the right side of history. On behalf of a long suffering people, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Council. Good evening, Council. My name is Matthew Shutter, and I am the Libertarian candidate for State Senate, District 16. My comments that I am going to make, I am the judge of elections of District 5, is to us all takers, that do we have a right to decide what people put in their body? Do we have a right to decide our question in the federal government about the Tenth Amendment? Do we have a right, to take the note, to ask the federal government where they have their authority under the supreme law, which is the Constitution, to regulate drugs? Because addiction is not a crime. Do we have a right to judge people, or to protect their rights? You know, the Libertarians were right on this issue from the beginning, and I would like to say thank you to Council for getting it. And yes, Ms. Moda, I agree. I agree with Dr. King Jr. It's time for a peaceful end. It's time to stop prosecuting victimless crimes. But we also have to be mindful of the other side, and respect their rights too, because they have a freedom of speech. Would we end this war? Would send a message that there's a victim that's there? And addiction is not a crime. It takes $35,000 a year to put somebody in prison. At most, it takes $20,000 a year, or 20,000, to get them help in rehab. Do these people need to be in a jail cell? Do we need to be fighting with our police? Do family dogs need to die? Do we need, you know, white cops shooting black people? I say no. End the war on drugs now. And I want to thank you, Council, for taking a Libertarian stance, because it is on Schedule 1. And you guys just doing this is saying, "We had enough." And thank you very much from the bottom of my heart, and you did the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Council. My name is Adam. I'm a resident here in Allentown. I want to talk tonight about the thousands of people in the Lehigh Valley that do not have one of the illnesses required to be part of the medical marijuana program. Maybe they have a bad back, a bum knee, insomnia, irritable bowels, anxiety, depression, or maybe they just want to smoke a joint after work. I'm pretty sure everyone in this room knows or has known someone who uses marijuana recreationally. And I'm pretty sure that those people were not criminals, they were taxpaying citizens. My wife and I moved here from Philadelphia. She was raised in Bethlehem and is a graduate from Yulenberg. Her mother has owned a business here in Allentown for over 20 years. We saw the progress and rejuvenation of Allentown's downtown as a huge opportunity for her to follow her mother's footsteps and to be a business owner in this bright upcoming city. I'm happy to say that she has done so, and owns and operates a business right here in Allentown. I personally book and manage national and international tours for a living, so three to four times a year, I cross borders into Canada or Europe. I've worked extremely hard to not just build an internationally recognized agency, but to also do my part in community service. I actually recently received recognition from our state senate for my work in the industry and in community service. Being from Philadelphia where cannabis is decriminalized, I never had to worry about the well-being of my family or the career, or my career for a small amount of cannabis. Here in Allentown, a city where I love living in, if I was to be caught with a small amount of marijuana, I could be placed under arrest and put on probation, and no longer be able to cross borders, taking away my career and ultimately the well-being of my family. It's 2018. We are way past the propaganda that came with cannabis use. We as a nation are far more educated. I believe the city council is forward-thinking and will do the right thing and no longer allow working, taxpaying citizens to become labeled as criminals for using a plant that has caused zero overdose deaths in the thousands of years of its use. Let's follow cities like Erie, York, Harrisburg, Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, and State College, and pass this bill, take the weight off the shoulders of honest residents. I feel safe when I walk in Allentown, so that tells me that our police force does its job great. But I can only wonder how much more this city would be if those police officers had free time on their hands to take care of things like the opioid epidemic, to take care of violence, to take care of so many other things. That's my time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Richard Lawrence. I am a 29-year-old infantry combat veteran. I served with the 10th Mountain Vision in the Tangi Valley, in Warwick Province, Afghanistan, and I am currently a medical marijuana patient and have consumed cannabis since about 2013. Prior to the Army, I had never experienced, I had never had any experience with any so-called illicit drugs. I never took scheduled substances until the Army prescribed me three times the normal maximum daily dosage of amphetamines. Respectfully, I wish to point out to you the hypocrisy of prohibition in most blatant examples of the Controlled Substances Act scheduling system. Methamphetamine hydrochloride and cocaine are both Schedule 2 narcotics. Crystal meth and cocaine apparently have an accepted medical use. Meth is prescribed under the brand name Desoxin for ADHD, narcolepsy, and morbid obesity, and you have the body mass index of over 30. I would also, hold up, sorry. I would be another statistic of an FDA-approved overdose. Before 2018, I was a criminal, teach of you, despite my honorable service to my country. You know, all that separates us from legalization is your decision, which I beg you to make in spirit of service to all vets and to all citizens of the country who have a score to serve. Not just myself as a veteran, but all of you as council members, you're not just leaders of your community, you're also servants of the public. That's it, really. Besides, I'd like to take a moment to look at the statistics. If you break down the statistics of the drug war in terms of prison, 18% of the population is Hispanic, 12% is black, 60% of prison population is either black or Hispanic, despite, you know, both people of color and white people using cannabis at relatively equal rates. The policing shows in some areas that 12, you know, 12 times the rate of incarceration for people of color in some states. I say, you know, I'm asserting that the drug war in some cases was an institution of racism from the get-go. That's all. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Eric Miller. I'm 03 East Bailey Street, Allentown, PA, 18103. Thank you again for hearing me speak on this matter. I'm trying to keep things a bit simpler tonight, considering there has been an enormous amount of informational and personal testimony given in the last few weeks. My point is concise, in that I'm sure all of you believe that marijuana, also known as cannabis, has medicinal benefits. I am certain at least five of you believe that adults possessing small amounts should not be arrested or criminally prosecuted. Hence, an affirmative vote for the ordinance presented tonight for decriminalization in Allentown is your duty. Most importantly, this is what the people of Allentown are asking for. In addition, almost 95% of all Americans believe cannabis has medicinal value. The laws and programs vary state to state. Pennsylvania's list of conditions is still very limiting to thousands of people in our city. After last week's meeting, I couldn't help but to notice a trend in the personal experiences of speakers. Almost every speaker mentioned at some point of using cannabis to help with sleep, one of the basic human needs, sleep. Getting a good night's sleep is not a medical condition accepted by Pennsylvania's medical program, or any sleep disorder for that matter. All these people can legally try various pills, or maybe, you know, grandpa's good old whiskey nightcap, that's acceptable too. They risk arrest and a criminal record if they consume the much safer and healthier option of cannabis. Speaking medicinally, did everyone know that cannabis can be consumed as a vapor, a capsule or pill? A sublingual liquid through transdermal absorption, or even a suppository? Without the passing of this ordinance immediately, all of these people are legally at risk without protection of Pennsylvania's medical program. Thousands of other Allentown citizens who safely consume cannabis leisurely, or prefer it to drinking alcohol, are also at risk. The arrest records are there. Let's do something about this now. The constitutionality of the ordinance has been clarified by the ACLU. Your hearts are in the right places, and I've heard each, at least most of you, speak on your belief that it has medicinal value. There's no need to fear the opposition, but embrace positive change and support from the citizens of Allentown. You might even be surprised how much further your vote tonight will reach and its potential impact on the state of Pennsylvania. I believe you have the courage to take this step forward with us. We are the secure voices, speaking in confidence, rather than threats and fear. Let's do this decisively tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir. Jeff Reedy, 905 Seventh Avenue, Bethlehem. President McLean, City Council, Mayor O'Connell, and citizens. I am here to encourage the passage of the marijuana decriminalization ordinance being considered tonight in Allentown. Throughout our discussions recently, I've been encouraged by a unilateral receptiveness and civility of tone. Though we've disagreed at times, I'm encouraged by Council's willingness to have this discussion. And though we have disagreed on the how and the who of passage and implementation of this ordinance, it should be noted that every person at the table tonight has expressed support for decriminalization. Council, opposition, and even DA Jim Martin have all expressed their support, but still believe that it needs to be done at the state level. Ladies and gentlemen, I am trying at the state level, but I am but only one voice directing a small group of determined individuals, fighting a system in Harrisburg that refuses bipartisanship. We are a minnow in an ocean, but locally, we are more, and City Council is often the first course of action with a body more representative of the local constituency. And while your argument might be that you cannot do this locally, I believe that the determination handed down this week by the ACLU/PA suggests that you do have this authority to pass smart reform in Allentown. I won't bog down things with more statistics and numbers, nor will I repeat the reputable facts already represented regarding usage studies or medical value, as that is indisputable, indisputable, I'm sorry. And I will waste no energy disputing an op-ed from the director of a facility that profits from conviction rates of drug offenders. Their marijuana facts are skewed and have almost zero merit. Again, profit over people, is that our goal as a community? Remember the aforementioned human cost for arrest for a small amount of marijuana? Decriminalization removes a stigma, improves community, offers first-time offenders a chance, and encourages the push to get this done in Harrisburg. We want to thank Councilpersons Affa, Robinson, Garidi, and Moda for their determination to try to get this done. I am grateful for the input and reception and receptiveness from Council opponents, and though we have disagreed, I appreciate your willingness to accept this 60-year-old cannabis consumer as an opponent on this battlefield, not immediately drawing dismissive conclusions. I'd like to think that we presented an informative and orderly volley, and if we have not persuaded your vote, I know that we have offered valuable information. I'm sorry, I'll wrap up. I also want to thank the media for its coverage of our proceedings, putting this discussion on the pages and on their websites. I want to thank the dozens of supporters who have offered support, attended these hearings, and helped us move the message. And finally, this native son of Allentown is proud of our movement and the brave voices who have lifted their voice and support at this podium. For some, speaking in public is a personal risk, forcing many to remain sadly silent. For all of them, I raise my voice and insist that you can do this in Allentown, City Council. Please consider marijuana decriminalization tonight, won't you? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Amy Peters. I am a registered nurse here in Allentown, serving the community. Thank you, Mayor O'Connell, City Council members, and the community, for forwarding us, the community, the opportunity to express why the passing of Bill 17 is so very important to Allentown population. I am a registered nurse in the city. I am pursuing a master's degree as a nurse practitioner in concentration in public health. My goal is to provide medical care to the minority, underprivileged populations in Allentown and the surrounding communities. I've completed accredited continuing education with the Medical Cannabis Institute in conjunction with the American Cannabis Nurses Association. As was stated previously, many peer-reviewed scientific studies have shown how beneficial cannabis can be in treating many chronic conditions, and have also debunked the gateway drug theory. A 2015 article from Weekly documented statements from 21 individual medical organizations supporting cannabis and its removal from the Schedule 1 classification. In fact, the DEA states on their website that, and I quote, "No death from overdose of marijuana" has been reported. However, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention have reported that in one year alone, over 4,300 youth have died from alcohol consumption. Of those 21 medical organizations speaking out in support of cannabis, some of these are the Medical, excuse me, the American Medical Association, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the National Drug, National Institute for Drug Abuse, the American Nurses Association, and the American Society of Addiction Medicine. The rest of this country is rapidly falling in line with the medical community's position on cannabis, as well as the population's overwhelming desire, and I urge the Council to join what is becoming an unstoppable force. Last week, it was stated that, I believe it was Councilperson Hendricks opposed the bill due to the current Pennsylvania state law, wrong time, he states, and I can respect that. However, Allentown calls itself the city without limits. This is Allentown's opportunity to prove that it truly values progress, aligning itself with other cities such as New York, Philadelphia, Houston, New Orleans, Santa Fe. By joining these other groundbreaking cities, Allentown will send a message to the lawmakers in Harrisburg that we want to join California, Vermont, Massachusetts, Washington DC, and other states in eradicating an outdated law based on racism, misinformation, and fear. By taking this stand, by enacting decriminalization, Allentown declares that it will not stand for the systemic racism and classism that has destroyed so many lives with cannabis prohibition. I stand before you, a woman of privilege. I'm a male-class, well-educated, white woman, but the criminalization of cannabis affects those who don't have the privileges that I do way more often than it affects people with privilege. When you have privilege, it is your responsibility to speak up for those without it, and I am speaking up for the community. We need this law passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joan. I live in Allentown. I wasn't going to speak because I don't smoke. So I would need to know, because I have young grandkids, how are you going to control this? If everybody's smoking? I'm kind of confused. Is the government, is the city going to have somewhere where they go and purchase it? Or how is this going to be controlled? Because I have young grandkids, and I don't want them to smoke.
It's still going to be, if you're raising your grandchildren, it's going to be up to you to raise your grandchildren.
No, but I'm saying, if everybody's smoking, and you're saying that there's value to it, okay?
Don't confuse everybody of that.
Okay. Whoever's saying there's value to it, I'm just confused, how is the people are going to get it?
Ms. Affa wants to respond, and then I...
We're not legalizing this.
Oh, okay, okay.
Decriminalizing it.
Okay, okay. Okay. Question is done. I thought you, I thought you meant you were going to legalize this or something. Okay. Thank you.
Sir. Hi. My name is Nick Solomon. I live on, I have kind of a common sense question. I just looked this up on Google, and we're like the third largest city in the state. How did, excuse me, how did smaller cities do this with no repercussion, and we can't? Philly, Pittsburgh, Erie, Scranton. Erie's on that list that I heard a gentleman say before. So how are we not even considering, let alone on the forefront, as our two bigger cities representing the state problem? Just a common sense question. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, see, one more.
Sir. Thank you all for your time. I have a business in 2733 West Madison, and I've heard a lot of irrefutable evidence in regard to the health benefits, social justice benefits, economic benefits associated with cannabis. I haven't heard what this specifically does for Allentown, for you individuals. And I heard, I've been here for a few hours now, and I heard the chief of police talking about, you know, he just, his main goal is to be able to respond to calls in a timely fashion, and if he is held up on minute details by coming down to City Hall, he loses his effectiveness. And I saw in the agenda that you guys provided, one of the stats that said, from 2013 to 2017, Allentown's had 2,429 possession of marijuana charges. And those are just charges, those are not arrests in the time it takes for those arrests to be processed. 2,429. Now, if you average those out to one hour, it takes one hour to book them, to charge them, to deliver a sentence. Those 2,429 hours equate to 101 days. That's 101 days of time saved by legalizing small amounts of medical cannabis, of cannabis, gentlemen. And so I think as you guys, if you guys are wavering, I'm sure many of you have already made your decisions, but think of the time saved. If you guys want to run a city efficiently and effectively, decriminalizing small amounts of cannabis is one way to do that. And so I'm not going to take up any more of your time, but just think about that.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Hamlin?
Okay. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Ken Law, instead of 721 West Carboon Street, I'm president of the favorite crime watch in South Allentown. I'm opposed to this bill, not so much maybe for the medical marijuana that it's supposed to do and help, but for the process. The sponsors of this bill should go back to high school, to their civics classes on state and local government. When any local ordinance is conflicted with the state ordinance, state ordinance, Commonwealth's law superseded. And that's the case here. You all did the right thing with the Resolution 63 to send that to Harrisburg. That's the proper thing to do. Passing Bill 17 is wrong, because it's not going to do anything. You're being held up right there. And all of you, when you took your oath of office for sitting up here, part of that oath of office was to uphold the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. By passing this bill, knowing that it's in violation of state law, you're actually violating your own oath of office. So then we have to start questioning, is it truly your oath of office, your integrity, or is it an oath of convenience? At this point, my feeling is, I don't trust anyone who's going to vote against their oath. Again, this is not the proper form. The proper form is Harrisburg, because this resolution, at this time, is worth 25,000 Because this resolution, at this time, is worth very much. It’s not going to be enforced. DA Martin already instructed the Allentown Police Department, so why are we wasting our time? Allentown has better problems and more serious problems for the industry we’re working on rather than this, something that’s not going to pass the muster. Again, put it in its proper form. You doing that with Resolution Sixty-three? These people can do it through their state, through their representatives. This is an issue for the General Assembly, not for the City Council of Allentown. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now, we’re just going to go back to Mr. Hamlin, but —
Hello. I live in Bethlehem, but before that, I was living in Colorado, and I —
Your name, please.
Dylan White. And I worked in the cannabis industry in Colorado, and I personally spoke into thousands of cannabis users from pretty much every state and every continent except for Antarctica. And I’ve, like, held old people’s hands crying to me about how much it’s helped them. I’ve spoken to tourists from India, teaching them how to use it for the first time. It’s simply inhumane to continue prohibition because it doesn’t work and it kills people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir.
My name is Kyle Cruz. I’ve been housed for thirty years. Prior to that, I was homeless for eight. There were certain times I couldn’t get my medication, and I had to use marijuana for medical purposes. Because I have bipolar type one, manic anxiety disorder, seizures, mood swings, suicidal and homicidal tendencies, it was my only route to medicate myself in order to survive the eight years I was on the streets. That’s why I came up to try and say something about it.
Thank you. All right. You two guys, let’s go. No, sir, you’re one of them.
Okay.
You and the gentleman in black.
I’m quick.
And then we’re going to move to the boat here.
Thanks for counsel, and everybody here.
And I want one shot.
One shot. We’re hearing all this financial budget problems, and basically the revenue that will be bringing back to the city will help out with a lot of things that’s going on, putting money back into the city, making it beautiful, and making it really a city without them. So that’s all I got to say. Let’s do it for the city.
Thank you. Sir.
Hello, my name is Mert Arceia, Muhlenberg graduate, resident of Allentown. I work in the finance department of a four-hundred-bed hospital. There’s something surreal about sitting in an office and seeing a three-million-dollar account and the outcome of that account as a twenty-three-year-old, you know, essentially passing away just because of the opioid crisis. It’s really one of those things where legalizing cannabis and taking the stigma away from it and turning it into a primary means of treatment for, like, patients who are undergoing extreme pain could take a really big financial burden out of our hospitals, out of our police departments, and out of the taxpayer base. And as someone who, you know, quarter by quarter, just sees the lack of times in the emergency rooms and just sees the huge amount of debt incurred by our hospitals and just our patients, I think it’s really a no-brainer to decriminalize it as a means of taking away the stigma and really opening up the conversation for it to be a primary means of treatment for people who, you know, rather not partake in using opioid-based medicines. Thank you, that’s all.
Thank you. All right, now, Mr. Hamlin, we’re going to you.
Okay, on Bill Seventeen, on the boat, Ms. Appa.
Yes.
Mr. Greedy.
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks.
No.
Smoda.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Shizuko.
No.
Mr. McLean.
I’ll be a no.
Mr. President, we have four yeas and three nays at this.
Thank you. Okay, Bill Eighteen.
Mr. President, I’d like to make a motion to suspend the rules and introduce our Resolution Sixty-three and Sixty-seven so we can do all this at the same time because they are the same document.
I’ll second that.
Mr. President.
Okay. Anybody on council this week? Okay, good work.
Okay, if I got it there, take those two out of order. Okay, the first one is R Sixty-three. R Sixty-three recommends the State House and Senate to make the possession or personal use of a small amount of marijuana a summary offense rather than a misdemeanor.
Any comments? Any comments from council?
Just a quick comment. As you said before, perhaps this would be an issue one to pass, a city’s resolution urging the state to change their laws so we can enforce more clearly the first resolution we just passed.
And I think we all agree with that. Anybody else on council? From the two —
Mr. President. I just want to thank all of my colleagues for this debate. Also, we did have a seven-nothing vote on this in committee last week. I would hope that we would have that again at this meeting. Something I said last week, I feel also needs to be said again, and several members of the public touched on this. There is disagreement up here, as we all see. This was not unanimously spoke. But this is an example of how a debate should be conducted. Everyone was given the opportunity to speak who wanted to. All viewpoints have been considered. All viewpoints have been heard. Everyone stayed calm, and we had this discussion. And I said this last week, and I will say it again, this is something that can be taught to our representatives in Harrisburg and in Washington as the way to conduct a civil debate. Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, my colleagues.
We hope.
We hope.
Ms. Appa.
It’s been stated that this is wrong, that this is a waste of time. Any law that you believe is wrong, believe me, it is worth fighting for. You just want to go to Harrisburg and tell them to change a law that is wrong. So this is not a waste of time.
Ms. Smoda.
I pretty believe that Allentown is the city without limits, and we’re going to do the right thing tonight, and it’s about time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, on Bill Resolution Sixty-three, which is to recommend the State House and Senate look at the penalties for possession of marijuana, open it up to the public. Like Mr. Robinson said, it came across seven in favor to nothing, so I don’t think it’s going to take a lot of selling.
Counsel, I would like to thank you again for honoring your oath of office, okay, and telling the state to honor their oath. And I’ll make this very clear, addiction is not a crime, and if I do get elected, I will make this resolution or bill. And I would like to mention Ken Krawcheck, Libertarian for Governor Will —
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we’re not here for political —
— Will also, harding all victimless crimes. Thank you.
Good evening again, ladies and gentlemen of council. I come here with a big smile on my face. First off, I want to thank all of you for your unanimous support for this resolution. I can say, as a representative who sits here in this room tonight and one of the few people that goes to Harrisburg on a regular basis, these resolutions are a great tool for me to help force our representatives in Harrisburg to make this a state issue so that we are unified across the state with this. So I do appreciate everybody’s effort and fortitude in listening to the facts and considering this, and I will take this along with resolutions from Easton that I already have, and I will have one soon from Bethlehem, and I’ll take that as I work with Representative Joswiak and other representatives at the House Judiciary Committee level so we can get this passed at the state level. So again, I commend you all for the candor tonight. I commend you all for taking the time and listening to this, and I thank you all for passing this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Hamlin, Mr. Hamlin? Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait.
Sorry.
Sir.
I just want to say thank you for the pass, and I just want to let the — I hope — how soon are the police going to know about this? Are you going to let them know?
Sir, oh, no, no. And first of all, we’re on Bill Sixty-three, we’re not on Bill Eighteen that we just voted on.
I’m sorry.
And don’t —
I’ll just tell me exactly.
— don’t come to the council in a couple of weeks and say you got arrested for having a small marijuana. Because it’s still under the state law.
But even though I do, I’m not paying a dime because it’s a victimless crime, and I will not be extorted for money. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Hamlin.
Yes.
Mr. Greedy, say yes. Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Smoda.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Shizuko.
Yes.
Ms. Appa.
Yes.
There’s Ms. and the yeas and the nays.
Okay, R Sixty-seven, please.
R Sixty-seven recommends the State House and Senate provide for the expungement of criminal records tied to low-level marijuana convictions.
All right, I will open it up. Counsel, Mr. Greedy, I believe this was yours.
And this is my resolution. I’m sponsoring it. I got co-sponsored from at least three of my colleagues. So thank you, Mr. Robinson, Ms. Mota, and Ms. Appa. Initially, I thought I would bring it up and probably just introduce it, but seeing the importance of this and that it’s only a resolution, just like the previous one that we passed, we go to the state, and request that they expunge the records of all those people who have been incarcerated for a small amount of marijuana. I think it’s a proper time to do it. We heard many people come in here today and say how horrendous this stigma is on people who are being incarcerated for a small amount of marijuana. We’re talking about telegram or less. We heard people talk about that is a racist issue. We heard people talk about it’s a class system issue. We talked about — people talked about it being a crime pretty much on minorities and poor weight on the youth and the veterans, public servants. And all those issues mount to people getting incarcerated, not being able to receive a loan perhaps if they want to go to college, or a job to take care of themselves and their families, and many, many other issues that are housing, education, many other issues that are bettering these people, people who are charged with a small amount of marijuana having a record in their — in the past for small amounts and who have been probably made mistakes, as you said before. And at this point, I think we are in the right direction to ask the state to change this and to give people an opportunity to do good, those who made a small mistake. We’re not talking about legalization, we’re not talking about selling marijuana or having to worry about your grandchildren on the street. We’re talking about people in this resolution, people who have been charged and have a record that prevent them from doing other things that we, who are able to pay for a lawyer, cannot do. So saying that, I request that my colleagues support unanimously, as we did with the previous resolution, on this resolution of sixty-seven. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greedy. Ms. Appa?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Greedy’s proposal to pass this and sponsor this is a good answer to the gentleman who asked the question, why did it take so long for the third-largest city in Allentown to pass this or to even approach this? Well, now, we’re not only approaching this, and I believe someday this law is going to be changed, the state’s going to change it. And when they do, we’re going to be one of the first states that said, now we’re going to expunge for the people out there who can say, listen, yes, you’re all — hopefully someday you’re all free of this chain that’s been around your neck for smoking cannabis. Thank you, Mr. Greedy, for — and I certainly sponsor this.
Thank you.
Ms. Smoda? Mr. Robinson?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I was happy to be able to co-sponsor this resolution, Mr. Greedy’s, because I think that far too often, we look at just solving an existing problem for people who will be affected by it in the future, and we don’t take into account people who have been affected by it in the past. I think that it would be hypocritical of me personally to sit here and say that I believe that we should decriminalize thirty grams or less of marijuana, but that people who were caught with this even a day before the law would go into effect don’t get to have their records wiped clean. We’re not talking about a violent crime in this conviction. We’re not talking about major, as Counselman Greedy said, dealing or anything to that effect. What we are talking about is exactly what the previous bill and the previous resolution addressed. I believe that since this council unanimously said that we believe that the state should decriminalize small amounts of marijuana, that we should unanimously say that we believe that people who have been wrongly convicted by a crime, that we want a law that we want changed, should have their records wiped clean so that they don’t have issues with housing, they don’t have issues with college loans, they don’t have issues with jobs. This council, before I was honored to sit on this dais, changed the city of Allentown’s application process for jobs. We removed the box on the job application form where you have to state whether you were convicted of a crime or not. Now, the background check that’s going to come up anyway, but it’s a way to give people that one chance to get their foot in the door. This is the same thing. We’re creating a situation in which we are asking the state to remove this issue entirely. And the last thing I’ll say to it is, as I said to you earlier, the story out of the twenty-plus, or almost thirty, I should say, people that have spoken on this, the story that moved me the most over the last two weeks was the young woman who spoke about how she cannot get a job under our state’s medical marijuana laws in a dispensary, and that’s what she wants to do. And I can’t say that that story moved me the most and then not support expunging her record. So I would ask my colleagues, please, let’s send this bill, this resolution unanimously to Harrisburg as well. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
I believe in a second chance. I believe that we are a progressive city, and again, we have to do the right thing, and it is my honor to sponsor R Sixty-seven. We are moving forward, and again, we have to do the right thing, and I’m hoping that we do this unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smoda. Anybody else here? I’ll open it up to the public quickly, if there’s anybody. I should know there was somebody.
This may be one of the last chances I get to see these smiling faces every week. Yeah, I, again, I want to applaud everybody at City Council for considering this measure. I think it is a wonderful step in a new start for young adults and adults my age, of any age, that are caught in a system with a bad arrest in a bad situation. And many of us know how the ARD system works, and young people get caught in that, and eventually they can’t make bail, they can’t — they’re not making their probation hearings and things like that, and then they get caught back in the system, they get thrown back in jail, and this costs everybody. It costs young people. So by making this effort, by making this consideration and recommending this to the state, you are again giving me another tool as I work with our legislators in the state. And you are again showing that Allentown is a progressive city. I applaud the City Council, I applaud the mayor’s office, I applaud the mayor’s consideration of all this as well, and I just want to say, I’m a proud Allentonian to see this happening and that you guys have started this discussion here. I’m a proud leader to see the voices that have come forward, and I’m anxious to see all this put into place, passed, and to see Allentown become a progressive city and move forward. And again, thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right. Mr. Hamlin?
Mr. Hendricks.
No.
Ms. Smoda.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Shizuko.
No.
McLean.
No.
Appa.
Yes.
Mr. Greedy. Mr. Greedy?
Yes.
Mr. President, we have four yeas and three yeas.
Thank you, Mr. Hamlin. All right, now we'll jump back to the previous page again, and we'll go to Bill 18.
Bill 18 demands a solid waste fund budget by transferring $137,700 from the California Balance to cover unbudgeted expenses in 2018. The funds are available, unexpected to see the funds from Allentown Park are being purchased.
That was my committee, yeah. That was my...
Yes.
Yeah, that was in my committee for the budget and finance, and we voted, we voted favorably to City Council unanimously. The administration, we want to talk about it.